7:00 PM, and the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. We have Katina here with us online, and D N E C has a work conflict tonight. So we're going to get started with the folks we have in the room and online. And I'd entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from June 12.
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Brendan, I heard Brendan first, and seconded by Alicia very decidedly. Any comments? Is there an echo? Any comments? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Unanimous. Thank you. Is there anybody who would like to speak during public comment? Okay, we'll keep moving. I'd just like to let folks know that I pulled the board about our July meeting schedule, and we're going to change it up a little bit in July, partially due to vacation schedules and other things. So rather than have our regular meeting on July 10th and our other regular meeting on July 24th, we are going to be canceling both those meetings. And instead, we will have a special meeting of the board. I'm saying special because it has to be noticed that way, on July 17th at 7:00 PM. And it will be preceded by an executive session of the board at 5:00 PM. Thank you. And in case anybody's wondering, because they may have noticed, we had an executive session regarding the superintendent's annual evaluation before this meeting. We're not going to be taking action on that this evening. We're going to be taking action in July on that. And so we'll keep moving along. Superintendent's report. Tracy, you're on.
Thank you. Okay, so the first, just have three quick things to check in on. The first is the end of the year attendance and discipline report. So there's some good news to report on both fronts. So five of seven schools showed improved attendance rates, and the two that didn't show improved attendance rates were so very close, and still, one of them was above the 90 mark, 90% mark. Our preliminary chronic absenteeism data shows five of the seven schools met or exceeded the district goal, staying below the 30% mark, and they're listed there for you, Natchog, North Wyndham, Wyndham Center, Barrows, and Wyndham Middle School. On the discipline data, it looks when we look at the total discipline incidents that occurred this school year and compare it to last school year, they're very close, 2075 versus 2074. But despite, or maybe not despite, but even though the discipline incidents remained pretty close to the exact number, we had, we have an overall decrease in in-school suspensions, 15.5% decrease, which is pretty significant, and a 19.8% decrease in out-of-school suspension. So this data tells me that the leadership team has been working hard at coming up with alternative solutions or proactive solutions to reduce the likelihood of suspending students from school. So really proud of that work. They, it's been a lot of work on the leadership front to make that happen, and it will continue in '24, '25. And the overall discipline rate dropped from 13.7% last year to 11.95%. So good news all around on attendance and discipline. I don't know if there's any questions.
That is good news. Thank you, and good work in the, in the different schools.
Absolutely.
Where they're dealing with these issues.
Thank you.
More to come on that, but that's great.
Thank you very much. Next up is just the usual report on all the policy work that's being done behind the scenes by district staff and the Policy Committee. So you're going to see some policies tonight that are up for the second reading, that are repeals or repeals and replaces. You're going to see some additional specific bylaws that are being repealed because they're up for your decision about that, but because they're not required by law. And last, were issued in 2005. That was a very familiar year, multiple times in our documents. I know that Brendan's going to give a report, or Katina's going to give a report from the Policy Committee, but this is all the information about the policies that are being discussed tonight. I don't know if there's any specific questions. And there is one policy that is going to require some board input on, that's that question about the length of board meetings. So I have a little sticky note to remind everyone, to remind us.
Thank you.
Yep. And last but not least is just, I want to just acknowledge that we had a really nice graduation on Monday, June 17th, and I appreciate any board members that, that were in attendance. We graduated the 150th class of Wyndham High School, the class of 2024. There was, well, first of all, it was outside, and I think it was one of the nicest, yeah, there's some pictures you can look at, one of the nicest nights that we've had so far in the summertime, beautiful breeze. There were some emotional speeches by the students, just a real, to me, it was a really warm kind of feeling, and I am very proud of the class of 2024. This was the class, if you recall, that had their eighth grade shut down early because of COVID, and started their ninth grade, their freshman experience in the hybrid model. So they have persevered, and we're really proud of them. So go class of 2024, go Whippets. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Tracy. Does anybody have any questions for Tracy? Or any comments? No? Well, thank you. It was a lovely graduation.
It was.
Now we're on to committee reports, and we'll go to policy first. I don't know whether Katina or Brendan are giving the report.
Well, I'm happy to, although online, we had, we have multiple policies for your consideration. Let's see, four of them are for the second reading. We submitted them at the last, the last board meeting, hopefully for your approval, as they have been amended. And so we have quite a few policies for repeal, as Dr. Youngberg just stated, many of these are no longer even laws, and there are about 18 of them, and a few to be replaced and repealed and replaced with the model policies from Shipman when some of them are the community use of school and facilities, transfer funds, budget planning, et cetera. So we hope that the board went through and read all of this, and that you approved the repeal and replaces, the repeals and the second readings. Brendan, anything else you would like to add?
No, unfortunately, I wasn't able to make, make the last meeting. I apologize for that. But the one thing that Holly did point out to me before is there is one, and I didn't notice if there was a separate agenda item for this, so there is one policy that does require some board input regarding the end time for meetings. Yeah, it is suggested that we post.
Oh, yes.
In the policy that, you know, we have a regular end time, and that there would have to be a two-thirds vote of the board to continue the meeting past that end time, should we have business beyond that. You know, the suggestion from administration and the committee is 10:00 PM, which gives us more than enough time for the vast majority of our meetings. You know, we go past nine o'clock on a little bit too frequent of a basis, but we rarely go past 10:00, so I don't know if any board members have any input on that.
Yeah, that's item number B9. So when we get to that, we'll have to just set the time.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mary?
Yeah, I just had a comment about the, the ethics, but should I wait till we get to that part, even if we take all of those policies in one?
I think you could bring it up now because it's not on the item, it's a discussion item tonight, so go, you know, if you have a question or concern.
Oh, it, it was just that because it mentions that the Board of Ed has elected members sign a code of ethics according to the town charter, I just wondered if we should have a link or have some information about that on the website.
And, and if I may clarify that, as elected members, we already, hopefully all of us have signed the codes of ethics and the town offices when we're elected. So that's, that's the code of ethics that we have signed.
Katina, but what Mary was saying was not contradictory to what you just said.
Okay.
What she was suggesting is that the code of ethics that the board members sign that comports with the town charter, maybe there should be a link to that on our website so that people wonder, what, what did the board sign that held them to a certain code of ethics?
Okay, I, I guess I didn't.
People would be able to see that, that's all. That's the suggestion.
Absolutely, absolutely. I didn't hear it correctly. Well, must be the internet. Thank you.
I think that's a reasonable request, and we can make it happen somewhere on the, you know, yeah.
Yep. Thank you. Anything else on policy? Okay, we're going to move on to curriculum. Mary?
Yes, we met, I think, last week. I don't, didn't write the date down here on my notes. We discussed the special ed programs and their curriculum. So we started with RISE, which is Reaching Independence Through Structured Education, and that covers autism, autism spectrum in the elementary schools. There's, I believe, three classes at Sweeney, and also classes at Wyndham Middle School. Yes. And the high school has their own special ed classes, which are three. We discussed the staffing levels, the ideal ones, and unfortunately, they have not been fully staffed with permanent staff members throughout the year. We discussed the STRIDE program, Strengthening Trust, Resilience, Independence, and Discovering Excellence. I believe that's the emotional special ed program with school, with pro, classes at Wyndham Middle School, Wyndham High School, and Natchog. Also, the Phoenix Academy Alternative Work Program has support for special ed students. There's Camino Alto, that is a specialized ed, educational service, which is contracted with the district through 2025 at Natchog and Wyndham Middle School, I believe. Some forms of the curriculum are instruction-based, instruction that is based on the unique learning needs of the students, and the other parts of the curriculum are the same as the age that is age-appropriate to the students. I'm not sure if I forgot anything.
No, thank you. Did, great.
Thank you, Mary. Does anybody have any questions? I think it's like really important that people, Board of Ed members and people in the district understand, you know, the variety of programs that we're offering, and, and how complex the patchwork of, of, of services and education support are required to be offered to our students and how we meet those requirements. It's a lot of work, and I appreciate all the staff that, that make that happen, and the taxpayers that pay for it. Thank you. Elementary School Construction Planning Committee, Mark?
Yeah, we have reviewed four RFPs, narrowed them down to the two, which we wish to interview the contractors on, and that'll, that meeting will be tomorrow for the committee from 4:00 to 6:00, where we'll be interviewing the two, and then make a final selection of the one we want, and there'll be another award of that on Monday, the first Monday in July. I forgot what day it is. The first of July, yes.
Anybody have any questions for Mark? Okay, thank you. I'm hoping to get this done. That's as good. We have to get, moving to the next phase. Lot of work to do over the summer. Thank you to the committee members who have waded through that process. Personnel. We're on to you, Paula.
Personnel Committee met on Monday, and Grace gave us an update on the many meetings and webinars they've been attending to have better access to recruitment services, update their information, for instance, from the Connecticut Department of Labor. They attended the CASPA, which is, oh, boy, Connecticut Association of, I think I have it right here, Administration, right? Okay. And they actually had the pleasure of, of hearing the Secretary of Education, Mr. Cardona, speak at that, which was, had to be pretty exciting. We discussed resignations and vacancies. We did have some resignations, and we certainly have some positions that we need to fill, both certified and uncertified staff. So again, we need those math teachers. We had a progress update on the IED, which is part of the recruitment, and they're coming up with some very unique approaches to, to recruitment, reaching out to the Caribbean Student Association, the Organization of Latin American Students, to share current employment opportunities, research the cost of possibly attending a recruitment event at a college in Pennsylvania, which is primarily for black, historically black students. So they're doing all they can to get out there into the many places for recruitment. There's also a new program going on, well, I don't know if it's a new program, but it's an update where they're working with the music teachers within our district, as well as some of the area musicians, to encourage interest in our students from the elementary level to the middle school, to the high school, to build the components for possible marching band and orchestra and all those wonderful arts that, that really make a, a high school very special. They also met with the new substitute service that we're going to be working with to begin the journey for hiring substitutes for teachers' pairs, CNAs, and nurses. And the HR department hosted a retirement appreciation event for the 13 folks that are retiring. Best of luck to them. And they had an appreciation luncheon for the crossing guards. So we had lots of information. Thank you, Grace and Dr. Youngberg.
Thank you, Paula. Are there any questions or comments? Mary?
Yeah, my, my comment is just, you know, once more seeing the, I know that many districts are going this way of the contracting out for substitutes of all kinds, but, you know, it really kind of breaks my heart that 31% of what we pay to that company, they keep. And, you know, I would rather have the people doing the hard work of standing in front of a classroom or being a nurse get all of that money rather than, you know, such a huge chunk going to a corporation in Tennessee.
Eric? I think everybody would love to see that if we can recruit. And I know in healthcare, it's just as much of a problem where over 50% of the nurses at some of the places I've worked are now from staffing organizations.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree. I, I think what Mary's saying is true. Grace, do you have something you want to add? I know that you're working hard behind the scenes on this. We do have building substitutes that we've hired in the district. You know, it's.
Yeah, and I'd also like to say is that this is mostly for when teachers are out, let's say if they're out sick, or if they have to go to professional development. You know, we currently have a company that wasn't able to provide many substitutes for us, and I think it's been kind of going on for a couple of years, so it's a struggle for the, you know, the administration and for other teachers to have to fill in to try to help. So we did some research on other companies, and, you know, we received a lot of good feedback from this company, from other districts that are currently using them. So that's why we decided to, you know, go with them and give them the opportunity. And the other thing with them as well is, you know, there might be a substitute that might end up having all the credentials to be a teacher, and they're looking to become a teacher, or they might be wanting to go through the path of becoming a teacher. So, you know, technically, we would be able to hire them also, but, you know, in reality, the reason for having them is to cover, you know, while a teacher's out, whether it's sick or maternity leave or anything like that.
Mary?
Yeah, I'm, sorry, the, the thing is Manchester, Hartford, New, all these places are now using the new company, which is the same one we're using. They're all drawing on the same pool, so I do hope they are going to be able to fill those positions that we need filled, but it does sound like it's just going to be the same pool with a different company. I know that they have a lot of different types of recruiting strategies that they use, and there will actually be someone that'll be in-house stationed through the central office. They'll probably be there a couple of days during the week, and when they're not there, they'll be actually out recruiting at different events, you know, trying to see if we can get substitutes to apply. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace. So now we're going to go on to discussion items, and the first item on the agenda is the budget transfers that are before us this evening, and I don't know whether anybody, Rita, are you planning on speaking?
She is.
She is now.
To the $652,096 worth of transfers.
If you have any questions, the, the largest one, again, is to fully fund the 2% carryover. So with this final transfer number 250, we will have transferred all the money that we need for next year, which is next week's. Do you have any question, if you guys have any questions on the other smaller ones, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does anybody have any questions? It's in our packets. It's a lot of numbers. Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Rita. I know it's a big, it's a big lift at the end of the year to make sure we have everything transferred so that we can settle the books. So I appreciate all the work by you and your staff.
All right, I can kick off the next discussion and invite my team up. So the, all the schools, districts in the state of Connecticut have been tasked with aligning their evaluation system for their teachers and their administrators to be in line with the state's new requirements. So I've asked Neil Weathers, Amy Finn Smith, and, and Grace Martinez to, as members of our Professional Development and Evaluation Committee, our PDEC, to present to you tonight the structure that they used to get the new plan written, which is here. We didn't make copies for the board, but we will give them to you if you'd like. It's a pretty large document, but they're going to walk you through the process because we need the board's approval that our PDEC has gone through the process and is now ready to present for the next school year an evaluation that's in line with the state's. So I'll kick it off to my team.
Good evening. So, Mr. Hawley, next slide. So Connecticut statute requires that each district have a PDEC committee whose responsibility is to develop and monitor an effective evaluation and support and professional learning system. And in doing this, we incorporated a lot of our staff, as you could see. We'd just like to recognize and thank the following members for their participation. When you look at the names, you may recognize that they span several different bargaining units and stakeholders. I know that the WFT president is here. She was part of the committee as well, several of the executive board of the WFT in, in doing this work. Next slide, please. In 2022, the State Department of Education convened a body of stakeholders that included representation from all professional organizations in the state to reimagine the educator evaluation system as it was time to address 20 years of research that confirmed the past model was not working to have the impact that it was desired or originally intended. And you can see, you know, on the screen, obviously, several of the groups, different bargaining units, or professional organizations that represent education in some capacity. Next slide, please. In 2023, the guidelines for a new evaluation system were released. In February of 2024, a new state model plan was released, and the purpose of a state model was to provide an example of the guidelines to be adopted, adapted, or to create one's own plan. What we did with our, our work was really to adapt one to Wyndham's needs, and that's what the, the committee work was around, but we obviously took large portions and, and used this as a strong reference point. Next slide, please. Our development process, similar to the Education Evaluation and Support Council, who convened to, to do this work, to set forth, was guided by a consensus protocol. When we were gathering consensus, we went through like a one-through-five model, and the guiding principles were that each member's voice was heard, they understand the proposal, they could support the proposal, and agree not to sabotage it even if they don't love it. The members of the PDEC committee must either be a five or four for a proposal to become part of the plan. And basically, that five-to-one scale is shown there, and we, we used this in, in our work when we did our work with East Con, in partnership with East Con, who facilitated the committee's work that you saw. Next slide, please. Above, you see the, the vision set forth that was modeled by the Connecticut State Department of Education. The overall vision of the process includes these key drivers: continuous learning and feedback, the ability to grow individually and collectively, and the new model is now a growth model, which is very important in the new model plan. Next slide, please. These seven guiding principles on the next slide form the state guidelines that shape the development of our work. Just very quickly, allowing for differentiation of roles. You know, sometimes you have people in the teacher's bargaining unit, but a teacher, and a counselor, or a coach, or a specialist are all different roles. Sometimes previous plans did not do a great job of recognizing or acknowledging in, in the plan for that. Simplifying and reducing the burden, trying the best to eliminate the technical challenge, reducing the number of steps and, and paperwork that might be tedious or potentially unnecessary. And then focusing on things that matter, high-leverage mainstream goal-focused areas, and connecting to best practices aimed at the development of the whole child, focusing on educator growth and agency. Meaningfully, what that means really is to meaningfully engage our professionals by focusing on growth and practice in partnerships with others that are aligned to a strategic focus. Meaningful connection to professional learning, and then finally, specific, timely, accurate, actionable, and reciprocal feedback. Next slide, please. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Finn Smith.
I usually watch these on Zoom, so I'm mindful of the microphone, because we can't hear anything unless you're eating the microphone. The Professional Development Plan and Evaluation is what you see on, you're looking over there. The, this is an evaluation and support plan, which really means that professional learning should be tied to evaluation, which this new plan does much more effectively than the previous plans that we've had. It clearly describes how professional learning is developed, implemented, monitored, and evaluated within a district. evaluated within a district and within a school. Next slide, please. During this process, it took us a number of days to get through the plan. You can see how thick the plan is. But the Connecticut guidelines offered us these six areas called six components. And for each component, the state gave us a list of non-negotiables and best practices. And then one category was what we wanted to choose. So the non-negotiables are, are things that we really didn't have a choice on. That's why they're non-negotiables. And the best practices were things that they recommend based on research, but we really needed to use the context of Wyndham and our own professionals in the district to make some decisions. One example of this is in that first area that you see, the component of standards and criteria. The state tells us that all of our work needs to be based on a set of professional standards, and they give us some options for professional standards. And then it was our job to choose which professional standards to use. For each of these areas, we developed both educator and leader plans. And in order to do that, we used that consensus protocol that you saw. We broke up into smaller groups who made decisions, shared it with the larger group. If the larger group, if everyone had a four or a five, then that was the plan we went with. Next slide, please. This slide shows you the shifts in the model of teacher and leader evaluation. The new plan is really based on making sure everyone in our organization has feedback as the focus of their evaluation and professional learning plan. It starts with a, an understanding of growth mindset, that we are all learners and we're all getting better at our craft. The old plan, on the other hand, was really focused, although there was feedback, it was really focused on assigning a rating to everybody. In order to do that, in the old plan, you see rubrics. So we had rubrics, and each part of the rubric had points associated with it. On the new plan, we've used some of those same rubrics, but we've removed the points, and we're now calling them continuums of practice and/or, some people refer to them as just descriptors of practice, so that there's not as much emphasis on the score, and there's more emphasis on feedback. I'm not going to read the whole slide, but one key, if you go all the way down to the bottom, one key difference is that the previous plan really focused on teacher evaluation and teacher professional learning. And this plan very clearly has a separate section for leader development, leader professional learning, and leader evaluation.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
What, what do you mean by leader?
Ah, good question. So the leader is the term the plan uses for administrators. So everyone from a principal to an assistant principal, central office staff who are administrators. You're welcome. Next slide, please. This is a graphic that represents the alignment of professional learning as the foundation to change leader and educator practice and ultimately improve student learning, growth, and achievement. So you can see that blue circle is where we started with the standards for professional learning, which leads to high-quality professional learning, growth in the educator or leader, growth in educator and leader practice, which finally results in improvements and outcomes for each student. And I'm going to pass this over to Grace.
Thank you, Amy. The next slide, please. This slide and the next slide represents the continuous learning cycle. There were three check-ins and, oh, I'm sorry. There were three check-ins, and basically, it's what occurs in each one. So the first slide is the leader, and the next slide, please, is the educator. And it does show the three check-ins. The first one is the goal setting, and the difference in dates is by November 1st would be for the leader, by mid-October would be for the educator. On the mid-year check-in, the leader would be by March 1st, and the educator would be by mid-February. For the end-of-year reflection, for the leader, that would be done by June 30th, and for the educator, by June 1st. So again, these are just the different steps to assist the leaders and the educators and the evaluators through the process. One big difference with this one versus the evaluation process that we had before is that now the leader and the educator can come to an agreement, not only on a one-year plan, but they could do one, two, or three-year plan for their goals. Next, please. So the next steps for the PDEC and for the evaluation program is, in the summertime, we'll have a few more PDEC meetings to create the rollout plan. In the fall, we'll be introducing the why and the changes to the evaluation and the support process. There'll also be a full focus on goal setting and professional learning plans. We'll also create a feedback loop for the first year of implementation. We'll then monitor the professional learning impacts and needs, and then make any type of revisions that are necessary. And just as a little bit more of a update, today I was able to participate in the platform that we're using, which is Absurd for Success, in order to learn how to navigate through the program and make different changes to it. And then in the next few weeks, we'll be working with them to upload the forms, which is the new forms that we created during the PDEC committee. And then in August, then we'll be rolling it out to everyone at new hire orientation for new staff, at the leadership retreat for all of the leaders, and then the teacher overview during the PD before school starts. And then again, we will continue the PDEC meetings as needed. Thank you.
Can I open it up to questions or?
Yep.
Mark?
Yeah, if we can, if we can for a moment, go back to the shifts in the model. I'm curious, how, with this changing without points or anything else, how do I differentiate between the teacher who gets it, who's on track, who's, who's moving forward, and the teacher that needs more work or is not getting it? How do I use this to evaluate the, the staff?
No.
Better now. So there is actually a more robust support system in this model than we've had in the past, and I'm not sure this is represented here. But the, the point of this model is to think of an educator as a learner. And the, it starts with a goal, where the educator selects a goal from a menu, right, from the rubric, which is designed to help the educator select something that would impact student learning. They would select a goal, and the, the evaluator would give observations and feedback on that specific goal. If it turns out that the educator needs more support than just observations, there are tiers of support. So that sort of basic model where you saw the three times of the year that you would meet with your evaluator that Grace showed, in addition to that, you, that's called tier one, you would go into a tier two, which in our model, the teachers that were there felt strongly that that could be initiated by either an educator or a leader, and it would involve more coaching, or more frequent meetings with an administrator, or it could also involve observing in another classroom. If that's not working, there's tier three support. And if that's not working, similar to what we have now, there's a way to formally support the educator with a timeline.
I, I guess I understand that, but I don't understand how I differentiate. How do you know that I'm a, a, a tier one? Where's the evaluation point? Where, who is making the decision? Mary just doesn't get it, she needs more work, as opposed to Mary does get it. It's all kind of silly touchy at this point, is what I'm looking at. I don't see a hard point where she hasn't met, met these standards, the, the kids are out of control. The other thing I, I worry about is, I'm all in favor of giving the, the staff time to be, and train, and to learn, and develop, and to move forward, but I only have one year with these kids. So I, I can't train that staff for three years and lose three years with, with the children. So I, I'm looking for that quantitative point.
I'll jump in here, Mark. I guess the reason the state made the shifts to a model that's more supportive and less ratings-driven is because there's now a couple decades' worth of research that says giving ratings and identifying weaknesses based on a rating system is not working. We're not seeing the supports that we're giving teachers actually playing out in student achievement. It's, they're not connected. The evaluation system to date has not been connected. I actually did my doctoral dissertation on teacher evaluation. So this, none of this is, is news. It's, it's a very, you know, sort of understood construct that the evaluation process is not leading us to get to that place. And you're right, that you only have one year with the students, but this isn't the way to get there. So they've developed this new plan in hopes of trying to make stronger connections about the educators and the leaders being learners and walking them through the supportive process to help them get better at their craft and respond in a, you know, in a way that's going to positively impact students. So, and, and the other piece is, this is a state mandate, so that, we're, we're doing what the state has asked us to do based on the latest research about what's working for developing our teachers and our leaders.
I can see, I, I guess I, I'm still having difficulty dealing with, at some point, there's a, you know that somebody hasn't made the standard. You're not telling me what that standard is, or, you know, is that?
Because it's kind of the way they, they design their own, they have some say in designing their own plans for the year. But the plans are tied back to our data, to what we're trying to accomplish as a school or a district. So there is a connection there. They can't just pick a topic that isn't, you know, connected to their work as an educator or a leader, but they do have a little more autonomy to sort of make it their own and provide the data that's going to help us determine if they're actually making growth on the target they set. They just have a little more, it's a little more self-driven.
Before you jump in, Neil, I just want to let Katina know I see your hand. Okay, don't worry.
There's just one thing I wanted to add to, to what Amy and Dr. Youngberg both said, was that even though it's not a rating system, it's still based off a rubric. So if you're evaluating a specific teaching standard, your feedback in what causes you to get a different tier of support is based off the standards of the rubrics that we're using. So while it's not a numerical system, it's based off a reference point of meeting the standard. And even currently now, under this system or any system, if you're doing an observation or in a room as a leader, or see a leader or educator that needs more support, you can do that in addition to this plan. Like, this doesn't prohibit us from intervening, because like you said, you only have a year. This is just a part of the teacher evaluation system.
Katina?
Yes, thank you. That was a very interesting question, Mark. And also, I was going to ask, how will these apply and what rubrics will be used to the other staff that are not teachers, except for social workers and psychologists that are intervening? There was always this kind of tug-of-war because some of the educational standards did not apply for the evaluation of these specific professionals. So is there any conversation about that?
Yes, actually, part of the, the plan is designed to have standards and rubrics for beyond just, say, the classroom teacher, and support personnel in different roles.
That are, that are appropriate to those roles.
Their roles, like, yeah, okay.
I think that's part of what Katina was asking.
Yes, thank you, thank you. That's, that's a, that's a great improvement.
Is there anybody else who has any questions, comments? So I see on the agenda tonight, there's an actions item, and do you need action on the part of the board in order to proceed with this, despite the fact that it's a state mandate? I guess I'm just asking, what is our responsibility here?
Yes, the board has to vote on it, but it is, it's a state process, you know, mandated process. We had some flexibility in our decisions, which were made by the PDEC committee, but the board is just voting that we've gone through the process and we're submitting our plan to the state.
Anybody have any comments, questions? Mary?
Well, I, I mean, I sort of would have liked to have seen the plan, at least to like, feruse it, well, not like five minutes before voting on it, but.
Part of what I want to know is, like, since we haven't had a chance to look at the plan, we've heard the presentation, do we need to act tonight in order for you all to move forward?
I think we were supposed to have you act before June 30th, but I can look into it. Give me a minute.
I, I don't, I don't, yeah, you can look, but I, I don't want to derail the process or not, not take action if we have to, but it would be good to know. And, and I would like to, I would like for us all to be sent this, an electronic version of this, so we have it. Thanks. Mark?
Yeah, Tracy, voting on the plan tonight says we, that, I, I'm saying that the staff went through and developed this plan. If after that vote, the board looks at the plan and decides that we want to make changes to that, is that still possible? Am I just voting the fact that, if you're acknowledging that you've worked on it, or am I voting the exact rule plan?
I don't know whether the board is supposed to be making the plan. It's the educators.
The board isn't making the evaluation plan. The board is, is voting that the PDEC committee has come together and developed the plan that we're going to submit to the state. So you're voting that we have gone through the process, and you're aware of the changes in the plan, that the PDEC committee has the control over.
So, so my question, I guess, is, is there a, a reason for me to postpone this vote for, for 30 days, if I'm not going to make any changes to the plan anyway? I mean, if I'm just acknowledging that you did the work, I can do that tonight without...
What I'm hearing Tracy say is that we're acknowledging that we've gotten a report that this work has been, gone through and developed. But if we don't have to vote tonight, that's an option too.
I'm, I'm, I'm looking into that right now.
Thank you. So maybe we should pass on this item on the agenda until we have an answer on that?
Yeah. I, I just would like to say that I don't mind voting. I, I don't think the board has any power in voting, in changing the standards or the rubrics. It's just the acknowledgement. So I, you know, I would vote, I would continue voting for it tonight.
Thank you, Katina. Paula?
And the plan is going to the state for their approval. They then have to give their approval for that plan.
They give us feedback on the plans we've developed after the board has said, yes, you've gone through the process.
So ostensibly, the state could read the plan and say, we suggest your team goes back and make some adjustments here or there.
Yeah, but I think it's unlikely.
It's not for the board to do that.
Correct. And I, I think that's unlikely to happen, because they, the way the structure is set up is our own team, the PDEC committee, is driving the work. And by design, the person who facilitated all of the work the PDEC did was trained by the state to bring the process to our team, who then ran with making the changes based on what Wyndham's team would like to see in the, in the, in the plan moving forward.
Thank you for that clarification. Well, we're not voting on it here, so perhaps we could just get an answer to that question before we vote on it. I don't know how other people feel about taking action tonight. I'm just kind of looking for reactions in the board. People feel comfortable taking action tonight?
I am.
Yep, Mary?
I just think that in the future, even if we're just saying you went through the process, we should at least have a heads up, and maybe this could have been presented two weeks ago at the other meeting.
Thank you. Okay, well, we're not going to take action right now. It's a discussion item, so we'll move on, and thank you very much for your report and all the work that was done to meet the state requirement. We're on to item C on discussions. Is there anything under the second reading policies that people would like to discuss? Okay, not hearing anything. We'll go on to action items then. Thank you. So the first is a series of policies to be repealed, and that's item A 1 through 18. I would entertain a motion on that?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Paula, seconded by Ilda. Is there any discussion? Yes, Mary?
Do we need to talk about that date?
No, that's under the next, that's under, that's B, item nine. Isn't that what that one is? Yeah. Okay, so all those in favor of the motion that's on the floor, please indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous, thank you. The next one is action on policies to be repealed or replaced, and that's items one through nine. And before we take up that motion, the suggestion has been made that, well, we are required under this new policy, when we post and notice the meetings, that the meetings have a start time and an end time, which seems ridiculous to me. But whatever end time we choose, if we're going to go beyond that end time, we have to have a two-thirds vote of the Board of Ed to continue past that time. So that's why the suggestion was made for 10:00 PM. Not that we're looking to keep our meetings going until 10:00 PM on a regular basis, but just in case you have some people who leave or whatever, you'd be guaranteed that you'd have enough people to move forward if you needed to. So I think maybe we should take that one separately, because we're going to do language to, to add a time there. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Okay, so let's, I'd entertain a motion on items B 1 through 8. So move, move, motion made by Alicia.
Second.
Seconded by Ilda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous, thank you. And then I'd entertain a motion to adopt item B 9 with the addition of a 10:00 PM end date, end time to our meeting notices.
So moved.
Motion made by Katina.
Second.
Seconded by Brendan. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
What about the place?
Well, that's in the, we have to say the place, which, whatever place is where that meeting's going to be would be in the notice. But we just have to have a standard end time. Does that make sense? Okay. So the motion's on the table. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous, or Mark, did you vote? You didn't? Mark is going to abstain. Okay. And then action on item C, a policy amendment, amendment to a current policy. That's just one item, C1. Does somebody want to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Katina, seconded by Alicia. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, it's unanimous. And then I'll entertain a motion on a budget transfer of $652,096.
So moved.
Motion made by Mark, seconded by Ilda. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, it's unanimous. And then approval of the Natchog Family Resource Center grant application for the 2024-2025 school year. I'll entertain a motion on that.
So moved.
Second.
Brendan. Brendan made the motion, seconded by Alicia. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Yes, Mark? I'm sorry.
My question can come afterwards. I'm just curious, are we doing the other resource centers as well, or is it just, why is this just Natchog?
Yeah, I think that's the only place where there's an...
Just the Natchog.
That's the only place left, okay. That explains it.
At this point, at least. Okay, all those in favor, indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous, thank you. And then action on the new educator evaluation plan. I get the sense that people are ready to vote on this, but...
We're actually going to wait till the 17th.
Oh, we can do that?
Yes, I, I just verified that. The statute officially goes into effect July 1. We are supposed to have a plan in place for the 24-25 school year. We have time.
Okay, so that will give people time to just feel comfortable, even though we're just basically approving the process that happened. It's not like we're weighing in on it, but we may have questions.
Yeah, the, basically, you're, you're approving whether or not the district decided to adopt the state plan as it exists, adapt the state plan, which is what Wyndham did, or present an entirely different plan. We did, we did an adaption of what the state model presented. What, what the, what the state is going to be doing is looking to make sure that our, what the decisions our PDAC made are aligned to the non-negotiables. So you are going to be voting on the plan that we've adopted from the state model.
Okay, so we'll take it up on July 17th, and in the meantime, it'll be sent out to everybody, okay? And thank you for coming to give the presentation tonight and for the work on it. And then we're not taking action on item G, so we're on to public comment. Does anybody want to speak during public comment? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:58.
I move, we move.
Meeting adjourned, thank you.
Bye, everybody.
I hear there's a severe thunderstorm warning until midnight tonight.